Okay. Good morning, everyone. Rocky Hill Imaging Center, the applicant in this matter seeks to acquire one Siemens Medical Magneton Alteo 1.5T MRI unit and one Siemens Somatom Drive CT scanner. I may have pronounced those wrong, but just bear with me. In its application, Rocky Hill states that it is an entity that is jointly owned by St. Francis Hospital and Medical Center and also Radiology Associates of Hartford for the sole purpose of providing the proposed imaging services at an ambulatory medical hub, having an address of 476 Cromwell Avenue, Rocky Hill, Connecticut. According to the application, this medical hub was expected to open in the fall of 2021, and based on some of the recent filings, it appears that it is currently operational. Today is June 29, 2022. My name is Daniel J. Chuka. It is currently 10:04 a.m. Victoria Veltrey, the outgoing executive director of the Office of Health Strategy, has designated me to serve as the hearing officer for this matter to rule out all motions and recommend findings of fact and conclusions of law upon the completion of the hearing. Section 149 of Public Act Number 21-2, as amended by Public Act Number 22-3, authorizes an agency to hold a public hearing by means of electronic equipment. In accordance with this legislation, any person who participates orally in an electronic meeting shall make a good faith effort to state his or her name and title at the outset of each occasion that such person participates orally during an uninterrupted dialogue or series of questions and answers. We ask that all members of the public mute their devices that they are using to access the hearing and silence any additional devices that are around them. This public hearing is held pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 19A-639A, parentheses, E., and will be conducted under the provisions of Chapter 54 of the Connecticut General Statutes. Office of Health Strategy staff is here to assist me in gathering facts related to this application and will be asking the applicant witnesses questions. I'm going to ask each staff person assisting with questions today to first identify themselves with their name, spelling of their last name, and OHS title. So I'll start first with Steve.
Good morning. My name is Stephen Lazarus. I'm the Operations Manager at Office of Health Strategy.
And Yedira?
Good morning. My name is Yedira McLaughlin, M.C., capital L, A.U.G.H.L.I.N., and I am the Planning Analyst at Office of Health Strategy.
Thank you. The Certificate of Need process is a regulatory process, and as such, the highest level of respect will be accorded to the applicant, to members of the public, and to our staff. Our priority is the integrity and transparency of this process. Accordingly, decorum will be maintained by all present during these proceedings. This hearing is being transcribed and recorded, and the video will be made available on the OHS website and its YouTube account. All documents related to this hearing that have been or will be submitted to the Office of Health Strategy are available for review through our Certificate of Need portal, which is accessible through our website, website, excuse me. In making my decision, I will consider and make findings in accordance with Section 19A-639 of the General Statutes. And lastly, as Zoom notified you in the course of entering this meeting, I do wish to point out that by appearing on camera in this virtual hearing, you are consenting to being filmed. So if you wish to revoke your consent either now or in the future, please let me know. So getting into the substance of today's hearing. The CION portal contains the table of record. In this case, as of this morning, exhibits were identified from A to DD. The table of record will be updated to reflect the late submitted prefile from the applicant yesterday afternoon. I also wanted to point out that all of the public comment submissions that are currently in Exhibit Q are also incorporated into Exhibit Z, but not the other way around. So I would just recommend that if you're going to reference anything in Exhibit Q, you try to rub it exhibit, excuse me, reference Exhibit Z instead. In accordance with Connecticut General Statute, Section 4-178, the applicant is hereby notice that I am taking administrative notice of the following documents: the statewide healthcare facilities and service plan, as well as all of the supplements; the facilities and services inventory; the OHS acute care hospital discharge database; and all pair claims database claims data, of which a relevant excerpt was uploaded as Exhibit AA on June 27, a couple days ago. I may also take administrative notice of the hospital reporting system, financial and utilization data, and also prior OHS final decisions that may be relevant to this matter. I believe the only docket that has been brought to my attention is the application filed by Radiology Associates of Hartford, and the applicant requested that I take administrative notice of that. Certainly, if there are any other dockets in the record that I missed, I will also take notice of those as well without the applicant identifying them at this very time. Ms. McLaughlin, do you have any additional exhibits to enter into the record at this time?
No, I do not.
Okay. So as I mentioned earlier, Exhibit DD, that's not in the table of record, but we will be adding that. So counsel for applicant, can you please identify yourself for the record, spelling your last name?
So Attorney Adam Rose, R.O.S.E., and I'm also assisted by my partner, Mary Miller, who's off camera right now. We've got the three of us on camera. She may not be participating. We'll see if that's necessary. If so, she would shift seats. Would you like her to make an appearance?
No, that's fine. It's enough that I know she's in the room, and you also have your appearance on file for her as well. So I assume she might have been present. So thank you for letting me know. Are there any objections to the exhibits in the table of record or the noticed documents?
No, looks good.
Okay. So with that, all identified and marked exhibits are entered as full exhibits. And Attorney Rose, do you have any other additional exhibits that you wish to enter at this time before we get into the hearing itself or the substance of the hearing?
Yeah, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. So we will proceed in the order established in the agenda for today's hearing. I just want to advise the applicant that we may ask questions related to your application that you feel you have already addressed. We will do this for the purpose of ensuring that the public has knowledge about your proposal and for the purpose of clarification. I want to reassure you that we have reviewed your application, your completeness responses, and the prefiled testimony. And trust me when I say I will do so many times before issuing a decision. So don't, don't be too frustrated if the questions seem like you've already, you've already provided answer, excuse me, answered. As this hearing is being held virtually, we ask that all participants, to the extent possible, shouldn't be able to use video cameras when testifying or commenting. And certainly, if Attorney Miller has any comments that she would like to make, I would appreciate if she come onto the camera. Anyone who is not testifying or commenting shall mute all their electronic devices, including telephones, televisions, et cetera. And I would also recommend that if we take any breaks, you turn your camera and your microphones off. We do try to stop the recording, but I can't promise that that'll happen in every instance. So. Public comment taken during a hearing will likely go in the order established by OHS during the registration process. However, I may allow public officials to testify out of order. I or OHS staff will call each individual by name when it is his or her turn to speak. Registration for public comment will take place at 2:00 p.m. and is scheduled to start at 3:00 p.m. I don't expect this to be the case, but if the technical portion of this hearing has not been completed by 2:00 p.m., public comment may be postponed until the technical portion is complete. And if the technical portion is complete before 2:00 p.m., we will break until 3:00 p.m. The applicant's witnesses must be available after public comment, as OHS may have additional follow-up questions based on the public comment itself. With that, Attorney Rose, are there any other housekeeping matters or procedural issues you would like to address before we start?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So we are going to start with the technical portion of this hearing. So is there an opening statement from the applicant's counsel?
Well, do you guys mind if I go first, or do you want to go first? Okay, yeah, I appreciate the opportunity and thank you for your time. This application was prepared by the applicant with the assistance of the hospital council. And Reed and Regan, I were engaged at the point that CIP and Jefferson called for this hearing. And that gave me a unique opportunity to sort of look at the application and the series of completeness questions and responses from a somewhat objective view and see the dialogue as I see it going back and forth between the applicant. And my role was, from that point, to take the hearing issues and use that as an opportunity to resolve any, any issues relating to the overall need for this application. And having done that, I understand, Hearing Officer Chuka, that your, your job is to look at the statutory criteria under 19A 639 and to make your findings. And, and our job is to demonstrate to you that you can make positive findings in each category, so you can approve this application. So with that, we went to the standards and guidelines with the assistant of a certificate of need consultant. And, and we very carefully followed every single aspect of the standard and guidelines to do an objective analysis of how do you determine your towns, which, of course, they didn't have the ability to use the plan definition when they filed the application. So they had to project which towns the patients would be coming from. However, at this point in time, as you had acknowledged in your opening remarks, the Rocky Hill Medical Hub and the applicant's Imaging Center there has been operational. And so that allowed them to actually have utilization data to see who actually is receiving the imaging services, what towns do they live in, compile that data, and use the definition in the plan to, to come up with those towns. So it's been my experience, and we did ask that you take administrative notice of our previous, or I should say, Radiology Associates of Hartford's previous application with respect to Bloomfield, because in that proceeding, the intervenor had taken issue with the manner in which we chose the towns. And we did a late file, and it became a part of the proceeding. And what we had established in that proceeding in our late file is that, well, there isn't a regulatory definition, and it is difficult to define your towns when you can't use the plan's guidelines, which are based on actual utilization of an existing site. So I would say, if you could bear with us in acknowledging that and look at the responses to the hearing issues anew with respect to analyzing whether or not there's a clear public need for this proposal, I think what you'll find is that there's a sound determination of the towns that are involved. I think you'll find a very detailed table of the existing providers in those towns and the reported capacities that we use to determine that the community threshold for both modalities, CT and MRI, is above the agency's established capacity threshold of 85% optimal capacity. And so with that as background, I just want to go through some of the highlights that will help you make the findings that you need to make related to the statutory criteria, a lot of which actually depend on those calculations. So the first one I just alluded to, that the, the community need in the defined service area is 105% for CT and 90% for MRI. Second, the plan requires that if the applicant has existing scanners in the PSA, that there's a separate category, the 3B category, that the applicant could use if the community need wasn't there. But I want to be clear that, well, the community need is there, but we included the St. Francis Hospital capacity numbers because they have these scanners in the PSA. And so you will see that St. Francis Hospital is at 164% for CT and 92% for, for MRI. And, and then in recognizing that the plan doesn't technically include Ra's numbers, but that has been part of the dialogue with the agency. And, and it's also been noted in public comment. We made the supplemental finding, and there you will find that Ra's 2021 total numbers for all of its offices, which span Enfield, Avon, Bloomfield, and Glastonbury. The total for all those offices in 2021 comes to 104% for CT and 92% for MRI. And to be fully transparent, we want to let you know that the Glastonbury MRI scanner was down for seven weeks last year. So when we say 92% for MRI, what we are using is a diminished capacity threshold that takes those seven weeks out. So we don't use the full 4,000. We use the diminished number that we indicated on our chart. But I want to note that even if you don't diminish that and you use the full 4,000 expected scans on the scanner, notwithstanding the fact that it was down for seven weeks, then Ra's total offices still show that MRI is 88%. So when you look at these numbers, and I will make, I hate to belabor the point because all the numbers support approval of this proposal, but I also want to note that we're now also almost, well, we were halfway through the year when we were able to look at Ra's 2022 numbers through May 31st to see, okay, where are the volumes? Because I think what you're going to hear and what you've probably read in the prefiled testimony is that, well, we think we're seeing growth trends. And what I recognize in the application and the dialogue is that the projections and the calculations and the assumptions behind their projections were, were, I wouldn't say called into question, but I think that you, the agency was, was focused on what we, what went behind those projections. But I want to note that because we're in 2022, and Ra has this actual utilization data of all of the Ra's offices, when you annualize those numbers, so you take the five months and you annualize it, you're going to see that the total is 117% for CT and 99% for MRI. And those are solid numbers based on where we are today, asking for additional scanners to address capacity that's shown in the community. It's shown at the hospital, and it's shown throughout all of Ra's offices. And to the extent that the, you know, there's that question of, oh, well, could Ra's Glastonbury office absorb any of the additional capacity in the Rocky Hill Service Area? To outline that one specifically, I want to say that the Glastonbury 2022 annualized data is 153% CT and 92% for MRI. So I hope that as a starting point, you should feel comfortable that, yeah, what they had projected and the strategic planning that began years ago, where they're using proven data, they're using advisory board data, and they're trying to project into the future how to best address the community need for advanced imaging, that the numbers are supporting their projections at this point, and that if you hit the reset button and said, is there a clear public need to add these scanners today? Absolutely, in every single measure. And I, I don't think I need to belabor this point, but the, the fact that this is a joint venture between St. Francis Hospital and Medical Center and their radiology practice that are part of what is now referred to as SONE, which is their risk-bearing, you know, clinically-integrated network. I mean, we've, we've explained ad nauseam in the Bloomfield application really what they're trying to achieve with this network, and we touched upon it again in this application. So if you're looking at the identity of who's trying to fill this need that we've already demonstrated, I mean, it's a great partnership between a hospital and a radiology practice located at a medical hub that the hospital had already invested in, and you have SONE network physicians. And you'll also see in the data that 90% of the referrals for the existing imaging services at the medical hub come from SONE network physicians. So you can see this is really a network-focused initiative. I'll also note that the Bloomfield MRI and CT that was established, that has shown that 93% of the MRI and CT referrals come from SONE network physicians. And the value of the SONE network has also been demonstrated with the Medicare Shared Savings Program. I mean, saving that, well, I want to be clear to respect the distinctions. SONE owns an ACO. That's, that's the Trinity Health in New England, ACO LLC. And that, that ACO participates in the Medicare Shared Savings Program. And what you'll see in the datas in 2020, they, they had extraordinary savings to the Medicare program, and they received a lot of money back. And it's because of their efforts that have, I think, spans decades, I think, in terms of looking at how to shift into value-based care and being the leader of that. So when it comes to the identity of who's filling the need, I can't think of anyone better. And, and I also want to say that when it comes to patient choice, diversity of providers, you know, this is in the statutory criteria, allowing St. Francis and its joint venture with its radiology practice to have similar imaging capabilities and access points as its competitor is, I think, important to allow and preserve for patient choice and diversity of providers. So what I hope we can accomplish today is that if there's any of the findings that you feel you can't make in good faith today based on the information presented, in my minds, that could only be the function of a miscommunication or something that needs to be clarified, because, I mean, I think everything's just there and that this is something that you, you can make findings to approve. And if that's not the case, or you're just looking for clarifications and just want to know more about the project, we're glad we're here before you, and I think that Dr. Tuig and Kathy are going to be able to adequately answer all your questions. So with that, thank you for your time, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Tuig, so he can say his piece.
So before we get started, Dr. Tuig, can you just spell your name for the record as well? And I'm also going to swear you in as a witness.
Sure. It's T.W.O.H.I.G.
Okay. And your first name is Michael, correct?
Yes, yes.
All right. So please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the evidence you provided in your prefile and the evidence that you will give in this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury? Okay. Thank you. So you can proceed with your testimony, and you could say whatever you would like at this point.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Attorney Rose for that great introduction. I think he summarized a lot of our work in this regard, and I would just like to give a short introduction as well. Good morning, Hearing, Hearing Officer Chuka and esteemed members of the Office of Health Strategy. My name, as you heard, is Dr. Michael Tuig, and I'm president of Rocky Hill Imaging Center and chairman of the Department of Radiology at St. Francis Hospital and Medical Center. And until my recent transition, I'd also served as president of Radiology Associates of Hartford for almost two decades. I had also, beyond these roles, however, and near and dear to my heart, I've been a practicing neuroradiologist for the last 32 years, and I adopt my prefiled testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm here today to attest that there is a clear public need for the CT and MR equipment that we are proposing and to explain why this application will bring true value to the communities we serve. Some of my remarks are redundant of those I made regarding Ra's Bloomfield application in 2020. But this proposal is part of the same vision to bring affordable, high-quality, value-based, advanced imaging into the communities served by St. Francis Hospital. Very simply, this proposal addresses every consideration with respect to acquiring new advanced imaging equipment. There is a clear public need based on the application of the agency's guidelines, which will be discussed in more granular detail by my colleague to my left, Kathy Smith. Beyond the numbers, CT and MR services at the Rocky Hill Medical Hub will generate value for patients and providers alike, all the while improving efficiencies, patient satisfaction, and outcome. Patients enjoy receiving physician, laboratory, and imaging services in a familiar and comfortable setting. This improved patient satisfaction translates into increased utilization and positive health outcomes. And as one of my colleagues stated in their letter that they had sent in and supported this, if there's one thing the pandemic has taught us, especially in patients who are, in his setting, sometimes immunosuppressed cancer patients, we need to have multiple access points to really allow us to continue treatment in light of a pandemic or whatever the next obstacle we face along the road towards health and recovery. We need to have these points of access to give us that diversity of access into the system in, in the face of unknown challenges like, like a pandemic. Providers also find satisfaction in being part of a rich environment of like-minded caregivers who understand that healthcare is a team sport. And in that medical hub, they're able to work in that rich environment and not only provide care and support to the patients, but support to one another. Our goal continues to be to improve care while lowering cost, and timely access to advanced imaging plays a critical role in these efforts. You will find a vast amount of materials we submitted, in the vest, in the materials we submitted, a lot of information about who we are as a network, but nothing can really convey the excitement we feel being part of a larger healthcare system, Trinity Health in New England, that has such a positive defined mission and mandate to empower us as clinicians. that has such a positive defined mission and mandate to empower us as clinicians to find ways to improve health and have that principle be at the core of our financial model. What is even better, though, is to have our effort, efforts validated as they have been recently with the State of Connecticut Health Plan designating St. Francis Hospital as a Center for Excellence for hip replacement and hip revision, knee replacement and knee revision, lumbar laminectomy and lumbar spine fusion episodes of care. So it really recognizes the collective workings of the integrated network in providing this high level of care that has been identified. The proposal that MR and CT at the medical hub will help us to enhance access to services while also being able to control cost. Some of these services have historically been done at a hospital and such as coronary CTA where we look at the arteries of the heart and CT preoperative planning for aortic valve replacement. And now moving them into the community not only will allow us to control costs, but do so, as I said earlier, in a comfortable and familiar environment. We don't want to lose sight, as Attorney Rose had said earlier, about the fact that Ross Imaging Offices, particularly in Glastonbury, have been experiencing unprecedented growth in both MR and CT. And so added capacity to the network in the surrounding communities will also improve overall access to Ross community-based imaging operations. Thank you for your time and consideration. We respectfully request your approval of this application so that we may offer these MR and CT services to further bring our network vision to our medical hub. Thank you, and I would now like to turn over the testimony to Kathy Smith, Chief Operating Officer of Rocky Hill Imaging Center, who will address some of the more granular aspects of the data supporting the clear public need for this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Um, Ms. Smith, would you mind just stating your name for the record and spelling your last name as well?
Certainly, Kathy Smith, and it's spelled S M I T H.
Thank you. So I'm going to swear you in now. Um, so please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the evidence you provided in your prefile and the evidence that you will give in this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God, or upon penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Thank you. And do you adopt your prefile testimony?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, you can proceed.
Good morning, Hearing Officer Chuka and members of the Office of Health Strategy staff. As you heard, my name is Kathy Smith, and I am the Chief Operating Officer of Rocky Hill Imaging Center LLC and the Executive Director of Radiology Associates of Hartford, which manages the Imaging Center. I also serve as a member of the Southern New England Health Organization's Contracts and Finance Committee, where I actively participate in review of regional payer contracts for the organization and SON's Bundle Valuation Committee. I adopt my prefile testimony. I've come before you today to testify as to how the information we have presented in our application and the documents that followed demonstrate the need for MRI and CT scanners that we are asking permission to install at our site at the Rocky Hill Medical Hub. My testimony is based on my personal experience managing Ross since 2011, where I joined following 11 years as the Assistant Director of Radiology and Imaging at St. Francis Hospital and Medical Center. In addition, I played a key role in the development of the joint venture between Ra and St. Francis and the development of the proposal before you today. At the outset, I want to apologize for any confusion regarding the data or other information that we presented in this process. Our responses to the hearing issues, however, along with our testimony, will hopefully bring everything into focus regarding the clear public need for this proposal. You will see that we completed thorough diligence in addressing hearing issue number one regarding clear public need. This is the product of my work with a CON consultant and reading Riga and involves a detailed analysis of our community and internal capacities that demonstrate the need for these scanners. We trust that you will have the applicable pages from the standards and guidelines with you as you read the response, because we organize the letters and numbers to track the sections noted on those pages. You can see that the percentages in the community and our internal capacities for both modalities are above the 85% threshold. We came to these numbers following the guidelines to a T. For example, the towns listed in the revised PSA are the product of using the actual utilization data of imaging services at the medical hub between January and May 2022. These towns generally track what we had pro- projected prior to becoming operational with only a few additions. With the revised PSA, we then followed the guidelines' instructions and quantified the scanners in the PSA, which does not include the towns of West Hartford, New Britain, Bloomfield, or Glastonbury. Additionally, since Ra does not have any scanners in the PSA, we did not include Ra's volumes in the internal capacity analysis. We only included the St. Francis scanners on the hospital campus because they are located in Hartford, which is part of the PSA. We recognize, however, that the focus on following the guidelines so closely may give the impression that Ra's volumes, if included, would show that Ra could address the need that we are trying to address with this proposal. This is not the case. So to correct this potential misimpression, we submitted the supplemental tables that demonstrate that Ra is not in a position to address the need met by the scanners being proposed today, as any office near the PSA is also above the agency's capacity thresholds. The Glastonbury office in particular demonstrates the need for additional capacity in both modalities. You've heard from Dr. Tuig how Ra and now the joint venture with the hospital have been enhancing access to value-based imaging services through the communities served by St. Francis Hospital and the SON network physicians. We believe this enhanced access improves the quality of care for our population. And while adding scanners to enhance access may not seem cost-efficient if you are only measuring how many scans you are producing on an individual scanner, it has been shown to be incredibly cost-effi- efficient when you look at the total cost of care and resulting savings, some of which are shared with us as part of our payer contracts. Case in point, and as Attorney Rose mentioned, in 2020, our ACO saved Medicare $22.4 million and therefore received approximately $16 million back in shared savings. Ra and SON providers were able to enjoy this share of the savings because of our willingness to bear financial risk upfront, which many providers are still reluctant to do. In sum, adding the proposed MRI and CT scanners to our Rocky Hill Medical Hub in support of our SON physicians and the patients they serve, while preserving and enhancing access to services at the hospital and Ra's other sites is critical to our ability to continue to build a robust, value-based clinically-integrated network with access to advanced imaging in furtherance of our goal to improve patient health and control the total cost of care. I'm personally very proud to be part of this integral network and welcome your support with approval of this application.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, um, and thank you, Dr. Tuig again. Um, so, Mr. Rose, unless you have any objection, I think we're going to proceed to questions from, uh, OHS staff.
No objection, thank you.
Okay. Um, so Ms. McLaughlin, I believe you're going to go up first, correct?
Correct.
Um, and certainly if anybody has any, uh, any issues, uh, hearing Yadira, uh, just let us know, and we'll, we'll make some corrections.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Uh, so my first set of questions, you can turn to exhibit A, the CO1 application. Okay. Uh, question, first question is on page 13 of the application, it states, based upon SFHMC patient experience, many SFHMC patients, especially older patients, would prefer to receive their medical care closer to their homes in a location with easy access and accessible parking. What data do you have to support this statement?
Uh, St. Francis, uh, participates in, uh, press gainy surveys um, and feed, we had received feedback via those surveys that patients, um, wanted to have um, more extensive services offered into the community.
And would, would you be willing to share any of the results of those surveys, or, or is there a, um, a way in which you are able to do that? Sort of compiled data or something along those lines?
I would need to work with our St. Francis colleagues to compile that data.
Okay. But to your knowledge, you, you think it would be possible at least?
I do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my next question is on page 18. And throughout the application, the applicant mentions that both St. Francis and Ra are above capacity at their existing imaging center location. What calculations were used to determine this methodology? Was it the OHS State Facility Plan or something different?
We used the OHS State Facilities Plan to calculate the capacity.
On, on page 18, I just want to make sure you're going to page 18. Um, eh, that's still on exhibit A, page 18?
Yes, I'm with it on exhibit A.
Okay, um. Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I'm looking at, um, I, I see different percentages. I'm sorry, if you can direct us exactly to which, which of the capacity statements you're referring to?
On page 18, it should be letter B.
Yep. Okay, I see. So there's a representation about Jefferson radiology. And oh, thank you. So currently both, oh, okay. Yeah, so, so you're asking about the currently both St. Francis and Ra are at or above capacity and, and what, uh, calculations were used to support that statement, right?
Correct.
The, the 2018 inventory?
I think they're asking, so this is
I'm sorry.
This is a St., they're asking about your internal capacity, so not, not the inventory.
Oh.
And so at this point, um, I, I know that we had run your numbers in the hearing process um, using the exact standards and guidelines. Those calculations are not stated here, so she's asking, did you, did you do that exercise that you did for the hearing issues in our part three? Um, to support this statement? Or were you saying that St. Francis and Ra were at or above capacity using some other measure? Is that correct, Yadira?
Yes, but were the calculations used to determine this methodology, the OHS State Facility Plan or something different, a different methodology?
Oh, you want to see?
Um, that statement was made based on our experience, um, of how our, um, how we're managing our scanners at both locations, both St. Francis and Ra.
Okay.
Okay.
Does that, does that answer your question, Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, thank you very much. And we're still staying on exhibit A for the next question. Same page, on page 18 of the application, and throughout, the applicant mentioned data extraction and projections from proven market expert and advisory board projections. Can you provide underlying data to support this?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I, I'm, if you, if you have the answer, I, I missed the page number, and I don't want to hold you guys up.
We're still on page 18. So letter C. And Ms. McLaughlin is asking if we have supporting data from the proven and advisory data that we reference?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
To, so, so yes, we can support that and provide that to you.
But just to be clear, there are a number of references to proven market expert throughout the application, so we're not just looking for, well, correct me if I'm wrong, Yadira, but we're not just looking for what's on page 18, but uh, any, any place in the application where, uh, that is referenced.
That is correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Okay.
Yeah, we do have that data. Um, I worked with a strategic analyst at St. Francis Hospital on this project, and so we can put that together and certainly provide that to you.
Thank you. Okay.
So we will, we'll keep a list going here, and Attorney Rose, it looks like you're also
Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna rely on you guys, though, so, but I'm like practically trying to
But so we'll, we'll discuss late files, uh, towards the close of the hearing. Um, and when, how much time you think you might need, um, once we figure out what the late files actually are, so. Um, I, there are no fewer than, I'd say, three people taking notes on what the late files are, so together, I think we can, we can probably get through this.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, thank you. And again, I'm staying on exhibit eight. Exhibit A, sorry, on page 24 of the application, the applicant states there will be no financing and the capital contributions will be made by the two LLC members from their respective strategic operating budget. However, on page 43 of the application, there is a copy of a financing proposal. Uh, can you please clarify? Would the proposed equipment be leased or financed?
So when I look at page, um, oh, 43 is the lease agreement with Siemens Medical Systems. I just want to make sure I'm looking, I'm referencing the correct page.
Yes, you are.
Yes, so, um, we did the, um, build out for the entire Rocky Hill Imaging Center LLC with equal contributions between the applicants, Radiology Associates of Hartford and St. Francis Hospital and Medical Center. Each, um, took that money out of their operating budgets. Um, it is our standard at Radiology Associates of Hartford in reference to page 43 to lease, it's an operational lease, it will come out of the operational budget, which is funded equally uh, between both parties. Uh, we lease our equipment to give us the flexibility to upgrade our equipment, um, through the life cycle.
Okay, thank you. And who will be paying for the proposed equipment?
The proposed the, the CT and MR, that comes out of the operating budget, which is equally funded by both, um, St. Francis Hospital, Medical Center, and Radiology Associates of Hartford.
Thank you. And eh, on exhibit A, page 16, specifically the letter C of the application, the provided URL for UHC is broken. Can you please provide a functional URL or a hard copy as a late file?
On page 16.
Uh, which link is broken?
Page 16, the UHC.
Yes, yes, we can.
Oh, and, and one note, though.
I, I was gonna say.
Okay, no, you're, you're right.
I was just gonna say, is
We updated.
We did update in the hearing issues, right? Isn't that
Yeah.
Updated, and I believe the updated link is included in the hearing issues.
Yeah, do you want us to turn your attention to where that link is? Because United updated, and there's a policy that's effective as of, I think, April of this year.
April of this year, they just, uh, UHC updated their policy.
Yeah, and we did provide a link to that, so perhaps that, the, the new one works, which obviously that will be the more relevant one at this point. Um, so that, was that in your prefile testimony? Yeah, sorry, we'll, uh, we'll track that down real quick here. Oh, I'm sorry, if it is, then I'll tell you, I'll check your, yeah, you're right, is in hearing issues. Lot of trees died in sacrifice of this proposal.
I think the same goes for any CO1 proposal.
Yeah. So that would have been probably
Twenty.
Thank you.
It is, it's on, um, page twenty of, um, the response to the hearing issues.
So that's exhibit B as in vector?
The fourth bullet down.
Thank you. Thank you. Similar question, um, page thirty-six, C of the application, the provided URL for Cigna is broken?
We can take that as a late file, I believe that policy has been updated as well. I just referenced it recently myself, but we are happy to provide that as a late file.
Yeah, do you want the most recent, uh, same as United, you know, whatever's in effects today?
Yes.
Okay, so late file, Cigna, CT, and what page was that referenced on?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six?
Correct.
Thirty-six. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so my next set of questions, you can turn to exhibit C, the applicant's responses to first completeness letter. Okay. Uh, please turn to page one nineteen of exhibit C. There are significant increases between the actual and projected MRI and CT volume scan. What is the basis for these increases?
Um, are, um, we submitted, um, at this time, the calendar year twenty twenty-one, I believe that was through May of twenty twenty-one. And, um, and move forward to make the projections. Um, the volume increase, um, we had seen a, um, um, significant increase in volume, but we over projected, um, those numbers. Um, you will see as, um, part of the supplemental table that we submitted um, that the actual volumes, um, were, um, you know, demonstrated a significant growth. But those volumes are overstated.
All of them?
Not, not all of them, um, just the, um, Glastonbury MRI.
And what about in Field and Bloomfield?
Um, and Field and Bloomfield, um, we actually exceeded those projections.
So you under projected for those?
We under project, sorry. We under projected, um, let me just backtrack here a little bit. So we under projected Enfield and Bloomfield MRI. The only over projection was Glastonbury MRI. You'll note in the Glastonbury CT, that is also under projected. We overperformed that number as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Once the, um, Glastonbury MR looks down for a period of time.
Alright, so this is, uh, Steve Lazarus, uh, just for clarification. So the volumes that you projected, would they need to be revised because of what was submitted yesterday?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so they, because these are project, I mean, if you ask us what we project for twenty twenty-two, then we would absolutely say that what we submitted in the supplemental table should supplant any twenty twenty-two projections. Cause those are, those are actually solid numbers based on actual data, because obviously the passage of time.
Okay, so these, these replace the original projections, then?
Uh, Yeah, well, they're annualized, so you can, you can call annualized projections. So yes, if you want to take the table, um, that we gave, I think, um, I think we did actually add up the numbers, uh, in, in terms of the totals for the annualized versus the totals for our projected. And Kathy, I need you to verify, um, that the totals for the three offices. Actually, I, I, I actually don't want to speak to the data, I'm not, but it, I, I will very succinctly say, Steve, that, yes, our projected twenty twenty-two volumes for our scanners should be supplanted by the table data that you have.
Okay.
So if you want to know where we're going to be at twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, in terms of what we think the, the, the final volumes would be, please refer to the supplemental table.
And to Adam's point, these were projected, um, in June of twenty twenty. So with the passage of time, we obviously have more accurate annualized data for twenty twenty-two.
Alright, thank you.
And sorry for the long road to a short answer.
Nope, that works, we got there, that's all that matters.
Thank you. And remaining on exhibit C, page one nineteen, as originally asked by OHS on question number ten. Please provide the actual cost comparison for CT and MRI scans at the proposed imaging center compared to hospital and hospital outpatient department imaging cost per scan.
So we did provide, uh, to the agency an average, uh, difference of five point one percent between the hospital and, um, the RAW offices. Um, I can share with you that the hospital has made a concerted effort to decrease their, um, imaging fees, um, for patients. The, um, policies as we've referenced between Cigna, Anthem and United Healthcare, um, even with a decrease in those fees, the payers are still actively steering patients into the outpatient market and away from the hospital, uh, site of service.
Ms., Ms. McLaughlin, I, I think, so you're, you're looking for more information relating to cost per scan? Rather than, uh, like the ratio, the, the different, the difference between hospital and outpatient, right?
Cost per scan, correct.
Does that provided anywhere in the application or anywhere else?
Yeah, in the, uh, in the completeness responses, um, the, uh, so let me, so I think this is, um, so I'll tell you what exhibit, so one second. Exhibit disappear. I can tell you, it's, it's, it's one seventy-six of the CO1 application, but I'm just trying to see where it is. Oh, is it in the same exhibit?
I think I have it right here.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, it's exhibit E.
Nope.
Oh.
Exhibit G.
Is it, okay, exhibit G as in go? And page one seventy-six. And if you guys don't mind, as a jumping off point, um, I think, Yadira, this is related to your question, you can tell me if it's off point. Um, when we saw that exhibit, um, about the all payer, uh, database, uh, uploaded and we looked at it. Um, so, I mean, I understand that, that, that you guys are trying to get a sense of, well, how are we competitive with costs? How do we relate? What is our, you know? And, and if, I think, and you correct me if I'm wrong, if you added Radiology Associates of Hartford in Glastonbury in particular, but I think
It's one contract.
And it would be any, if, yes.
Radiology Associates of Hartford.
So if you took what you did and you, on that exhibit for the all payer claims database, and you included Radiology Associates of Hartford, those are going to be the same, um, cost points that relate to this joint venture. So that would allow you to look at apples to apples, it, but when you try to, um, you know, talk about, well, what is the average cost? Even among saying, well, commercial pairs, there's so many ins and outs to it that I'm, you know, trying to nail my own client down on these measures, it's just very difficult, because you keep getting different variables back. But, um, in our discussion, we were thinking, well, the, the all payer, uh, claims database, you had your search parameters in there. And apparently that was coming up with other providers and their reported numbers, and there was the, the average that was right there in the me, in the middle, and then there was the median towards the end with dollar amounts for various procedures. So if you added Radiology Associates of Hartford to that in your search parameters, so maybe open it up to, uh, Glastonbury and just look at what, um, RAW reports in Glastonbury or any other office. I think that'll get you the cost comparison that you're looking for, so is that on point?
Steve, is, is that something that we are able to do with APCD?
Uh, we should be able to pull it up. But it would be also helpful to make sure that maybe the applicants can provide that as well, so we can actually just verify that.
So we can fill in that exact column, that exact spreadsheet, um, that you had by those CPT codes that are listed. Um,
I think that would be very helpful, especially since they can match up the same CPT codes, because that can be the problem sometimes.
Great, so we'll, so even though the, um, you're filing, and I understand it can't have the CPT codes, you know, that's a, you know, a public payer issue, but on the copy that I supply to you, I'll include the CPT codes um, and the, and the description of the CPT code with all of the respective columns. Is that we satisfied that, that request?
Yes, I think that would be helpful, we can take that as a late file.
Thank you.
Okay, so as long as you know what you're reporting. Cause, uh, okay, uh, I'm gonna leave it, good.
Thank you. And my last question on exhibit C is on page twenty-two, I'm sorry, page one twenty-two. The applicant provided a draft operating agreement between St. Francis Hospital Medical Center and Radiology Associates of Hartford for Rocky Hill Imaging Center. Please provide an executed copy of the final operating agreement as a late file.
We would be happy to.
Um, just one question about that. What's that? Yeah, um, I, I assume that you guys won't have any issue with anything that's proprietary or sensitive being redacted?
Um, Steve can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in past applications, we've asked that, um, the original document be sent directly by email to us and you provide a redacted version on the portal.
Okay, and with a caveat then, that, um, that you guys will protect anything that we redacted for FOIA purposes, obviously. So, you know, FOIA has all the exceptions, as long as we're on the same page with the materials that we redact. Now, obviously, we, if you think we over redacted and we don't fit a FOIA exception, please, you know, let us know, but um, I, I think that's generally the, the principle there, that if we redacted, the public won't be able to see it, but we're fine with you guys seeing it.
Yeah.
Yes, I, yes, I think if you, if you email it to, copy to us, uh, the underdacted copy, the hearing officer will review it and actually decide what's confidential and he will, we will label it as such, and that would not be available. Um, and the redacted copy can be uploaded to the portal.
Okay, so are you guys gonna redact and then upload? Is that what you're saying, like, so, uh, hearing officer, oh, no.
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. Right.
There'll be a clean copy and a redacted copy.
Yeah, okay.
But it, but a clean copy can be sent by, directly by email, not through portal.
Okay.
And then you can send it to me or anybody, and then we will make sure it gets forwarded to the hearing officer, who will then review it to make the call whether it's acceptable to label it as confidential.
Okay, and is it okay, we, we email to you?
That's fine.
And if you, if you want to use any sort of encrypted email methodology, that's fine as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. And for my, my last set of questions will be focused on exhibit V. He has a Victor applicant's final responses to hearing issues.
I think, V is in vector.
V is in vector?
Oh, yeah.
V, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, so on page fifteen of the application, the PSA, primary service area, was based off of a ten-minute drive to the medical hub. On page four of exhibit V, the rationale for the updated primary service area town is based on seventy-five percent of applicant patients. Please clarify, the applicant for this statement, is it St. Francis and RAW?
No, it's, it's actually the Rocky Hill Imaging Center.
At the medical hub?
At the medical hub, that is correct.
And please clarify, are seventy-five percent of the patients from St. Francis or from the medical hub?
From the medic, from the Rocky Hill Imaging Center at the medical hub. So it's based on actual patient utilization of the imaging services that we're providing at the Rocky Hill Imaging Center at the medical hub to date from January eighteenth of this year to May thirty-first of this year.
Thank you. On page four of the same exhibit V, the applicant provided an updated PSA, primary service area, adding three additional towns. Based on the OHS inventory, there are other existing providers in the contiguous areas. Why would they omit it from the final PSA?
Why, why would you take each town? Take you as towns on the head?
Continue for the standards and guidelines, page sixty. Um, do you want to, I mean, I can answer, it did, the, the reason is because when the, um, when the standards and guidelines ask you to apply the methodology, the need methodology, they ask you to quantify the scanners in the PSA. And, uh, but if, if there's a reference to also including contiguous towns to the PSA, you'd certainly point that out, but we didn't, we, our reading of, um, how you do your needs analysis is that you, you literally just, first off, the PSA is a specific definition, I have it in front of me, but I'm sure you guys are familiar with it on page sixty. I have it in front of me, but I'm sure you guys are familiar with it on page 60. And reading from it, the PSA is that geographic area by town for the services location in the application, consisting of the lowest number of contiguous zip codes from which the applicant draws at least 75% of its patients for this service at such location. So that gets you your primary service area. And then when you do your actual need methodology in Section 3 on page 61, and I'm using the MRI one, the, the 3A says the applicant is expected to demonstrate that the percentage utilization of current capacity in the primary service area exceeds 85%. So in that calculation, you wouldn't include any towns outside the service area. So, but, you know, you guys, you guys have reserved the right to, you know, want the information and, and to ask the questions. And so I know that in the responses to the hearing issues where you did ask about other existing providers and why they weren't included from other towns. I, I would, first off, I refer you to that answer that has been adopted by Kathy as part of her prefile testimony. So that would be page 23 of Exhibit V. And, and so that was, that response was intended to, I think, get to this question. And if we didn't exactly hit the mark, we're happy to, to address any follow-up questions you have.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Lazarus and Ms. McLaughlin, are, are you seeking a pre or a late file relating to contiguous towns outside of PSA or not? Based on what Mr. Rose just said on behalf of his clients?
I think, this is Steve Lazarus, I think it would be helpful to have the contiguous towns submitted with the providers in those towns.
Yeah, and, and I think we can, we've looked at that. And, and we still think, I mean, I could tell you, 10 Ways to Tuesday, Clear Public Needs proven for this. And so we have looked at that. And so we're happy to give you that, that the same analysis, including those towns. I mean, but, but I will say, prior to doing that, that we think that, you know, the need. So when you say contiguous towns, it starts to get to very loose. And when you look at sort of practical realities of, you know, do we think somebody seeking services at the medical hub should be redirected to West Hartford? It, it starts to come, what starts to come into play is that, you know, there's very practical reasons why those patients would not likely access those resources or it wouldn't be optimal. But we'll, we'll spare you those explanations. But I just want to make sure that on the record, we have that caveat that the plan contemplated that you only quantify what's in the PSA. But with that, we will give you this additional data. And I think you will see it continues to support the need for the proposal.
Thank you. And I think it would be fine if you want, do want to include explanation as to why those terms are not included. I think you're welcome to do that.
Okay.
Thank you. And still on Exhibit V, staying on Exhibit V. I'm sorry. Can you please turn to page five? The applicant provided updated projection data for MRI scan volume and capacity. How were these projections calculated? Can you provide a quantitative calculation for the projected volumes for each of the projected years?
We did look at the capacity in the, in the region, in, in the PSA. And we did rely heavily on the Advisory Board, Imaging Performance Market Estimator to look at their depth of knowledge and what they project for imaging volume. So we do have copies of that, and we'd be happy to supply that as well.
Great, thank you.
But what was that again? I'm sorry.
Oh, we relied heavily on the Advisory Board, the Imaging Performance Market Estimator. And we do have that, we'd be able to supply that to you in a late file.
Okay.
It's based on the PSA.
Yes, I think if you can provide the data, but also if you can include.
Okay.
So I think that would be very helpful. But I think also it'd be helpful to have the actual calculation that gets us to the projections. So however you got, arrived at those projections, it would be helpful to have that with the backup data.
And, and just to clarify, so these projections are the same projections that were in the application, just pushed out a year. And yeah. And so we're, what, I just want to make sure what I understand, at least so I can help Kathy, what, what we're providing.
So, you know, you, you said you, you base them on this advisory, Imaging Advisory Board material, which is fine. So we're happy to have that. But if we can actually have some sort of a calculation that gets us to the number saying, based on this, this is what we used as a basis, this is what we projected out for, as percentage, based on what? And then this is how we got to each of the year's projections. So actually, just trying to quantify it.
Again, I'm 10 steps behind. She says she's got it, so.
Yeah, we have.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, thanks, Kathy.
Thank you. And Exhibit V, please provide updated projected CT scan volumes and capacity for 2023, 2024, and 2025 as provided for the MRI and also provide a quantitative calculation for the projected volumes of each of the three projected years as a late file.
That's what we just talked about, correct? Oh, CT and MRI separately.
So we can include that in that same late file, just if you can break it out by CT and MRI.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, and still on Exhibit V, page 15. The applicant mentions that Ra has observed a steady growth of lung cancer screening over the years. Can you provide articles and data from other locations to support these statements?
In addition to the footnotes on this page?
Some in our previous filing or no? The Bloomfield.
I mean, we did provide several citations already. I think we should clarify. I'm sorry, could you, could you repeat your request, Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, page 15. The applicant mentions that Ra has observed a steady growth of lung cancer screening over the years. Can you provide articles and data from other locations to support this, this statement?
So the, yeah, so the, do you want, would Rod, so that statement's related to Raw's personal experience in, in growth and volume? Would you like to see raw volume over, yeah, like, so, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so you just want data to support that statement? What we're looking at to make that observation?
Exactly, yes.
Yes. So that's a late file, raw data, and you know what you're doing on that? Okay. Raw data to support growth.
Okay. And on page 23 of the same Exhibit V, the applicant mentions that Ra has been experiencing strong volumes at its community-based imaging site. Can you clarify what is a community-based site?
Those are each of our imaging centers in Avon, Glastonbury, Bloomfield, and Enfield. Our existing imaging centers.
Yeah, we.
I was gonna say has been submitted in various.
Yeah, it's a semantics thing, and we apologize for using different. So sometimes we refer to them as imaging often, like Raw's offices. Sometimes we call them imaging sites. Sometimes we clarify and say, well, Raw's community-based imaging sites. Because, so Raw is a practice, does do the professional services of various hospitals in the area, but they don't own the equipment, it's not their own. So that was just a way of basically saying Raw's technical component operations in the communities. But it is just Glastonbury, CT, and Avon, and then Enfield and Bloomfield. So both modalities are provided at all locations except for Avon, where Raw does the CT and the hospital does the MRI.
All right, thank you. I think that, that helps clarify is we were just, I think we got caught up on the community-based site versus an office.
Yeah.
Thank you. That, that helps.
Thank you. Thank you for your, and that wraps it up for me and my questions. Thank you for your answers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lazarus, do you have any questions?
I know I do not. Thank you.
Okay. And, or Tony Rose, did you have any follow-up on anything that came up over the past hour and a half? Wanted to address with your witnesses?
I want to make sure that we understand the late file. At the end of this, I think we'll probably, but before I do that, I want to make sure that some of the things that we nodded our head like, oh, yeah, we know what we're doing. So if we could go offline for a bit, and I could go to my notes and look at all the late files, and we can make sure that at least we understand. If collectively we understand, then okay. But if there's ones where we have different views on what we think we're giving you, I think it would be helpful after a quick break that we kind of outline for those for you. So then you can tell us more specifically what you were envisioning.
I, I was actually going to suggest that we do that after the public comment, if there is any. That way you'll have even more time to figure it out. And, and so that we don't need to break now and then come back for a few minutes and then break again for.
Yeah, that sounds fine.
Okay. So does that work for you, Yadira, and you, Steve?
Yes, that's, that's fine.
Okay. So we will have closing argument or comments after the public comment, if there is any public comment. I wish there was a way for us to move things further up into the day. But due to the way these hearings proceed, it's, it's just the way we have to do it here. So we will have the public hearing sign up between 2:00 and 3:00. And if anybody signs up, we will hear their perspective at 3:00 o'clock. And then we will sort of wrap up the, the, tie up the loose ends and adjourn the hearing at that point. Does that work for you, Tony Rose?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay. And certainly, if any, if anything comes up over the break that you, you'd like to address, we can address that at, at the backend as well.
Okay. All right, well, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you a little, see you a little later.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Hope you guys get outside. It looks like a beautiful day.
Thanks. Thank you. Welcome back. For those just joining us, this is the second portion of today's hearing concerning a CON application filed by Rocky Hill Imaging Center. It's docketed as 21-32439-CON. We had the technical portion of the hearing this morning, and now we are moving on to the public comment portion. We will call the names of those who have signed up to speak in the order in which they are registered. I understand that at least one of the doctors who has pre-registered has patients, though. So that may require us to go a little bit out of order. If we miss anyone, please utilize the raise hand function if that's available to us. I know we were having some issues with the, the chat function in Zoom. So if that's not working, feel free to just, just make your presence known, and we'll be happy to hear from you. Speaking time is limited to three minutes. Please do not be dismayed if we stop you at the conclusion of your time. We want to be fair in how these comments are presented. Additionally, we strongly encourage you to submit any further written comments to OHS by email or mail no later than one week, seven calendar days from today. Our contact information is on our website and on the public information sheet, which were provided at the beginning of this hearing. Thank you for taking the time to be here today and for your cooperation. We are now ready to hear statements from the public. Leslie Greer from our office has been kind enough to keep a list of individuals who have submitted their names, so I may need her assistance with this. Anyone speaking, I would just remind you to turn your video and microphone on before you begin talking. So we are going to begin, I believe, with Lucio Chiogli. Is that correct, Ms. Greer?
Yes.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chiogli, please state your name for the record and be sure to spell it as well, if you don't mind. And then you can continue with your, your comment.
Thank you. My name is Lucio Chiogli. That is spelled L-U-C-I-O. C-I-O-G-L-I. My family lives in Rocky Hill, and we have been cared for by the many physicians and people with St. Francis Hospital, who are part of the SONE network. My mother passed away a few years ago from lung cancer and complications from an underlying heart condition. My father followed last year after a long battle with leukemia. During this time, there were many trips to see physicians, including specialists in oncology and cardiology. There were also many visits to the hospital and many diagnostic imaging tests with CT and MRI provided by the providers at Ra, which were critical in guiding their care. Through it all, the specialists and doctors with St. Francis were all supportive and worked together as a team to provide my parents with the best care possible. During this time, I came to appreciate how the radiologists at Ra helped guide my parents' care through their imaging services and how they were an integral part of the care team as we worked through managing their cancer and my mother's heart issues. My family and I continue to have our care with St. Francis and the affiliated providers that are part of their network. I'm excited that there is now a Trinity access site here in my community. And that, that will include advanced imaging services with CT and MRI provided by Ra pending approval of this CON. There were many times when my parents were ill. My family had to transport them across town for care with their providers, including CT and MRI services at either the hospital or other imaging sites in the network. This was a burden in my family as we had to juggle jobs, childcare, with caring for my parents to obtain access to our providers and services. I was fortunate to have had the support system and resources to help manage the situation, but the majority of families faced with these care scenarios do not. Having access to our physicians, providers, and imaging services here in Rocky Hill back then would have made things much easier for us over the years. And there are many others who live here in Weathersfield and Rocky Hill who have similar hurdles in accessing care. They'll benefit greatly from the new Trinity Access Center and the imaging services from Ra. Thank you for your time and allowing me to provide this comment. And I would just like to add that I give my full support to this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chiogli. I believe next on the list is Susan Albano or Albano. Is she with us right now?
Yes, I am.
My name is Susan Albano. That's S U S A N A L B A N O. Good afternoon, Hearing Officer Chuka, members of the Office of Health Strategy and my colleagues at Radiology Associates of Hartford. I am the Chief Executive Officer of Prime Healthcare. Prime Healthcare is a seventy provider, primary care-driven, multi-specialty group with offices located throughout the greater Hartford area and as well as well in Tolland and New Haven counties. With approximately twenty thousand, two twenty thousand attributed lives, we are the largest private practice group in the Southern New England Healthcare Organization, which is also known as SONE. Our group works collaboratively with other providers in SONE on population health initiatives and the delivery of clinically-integrated care to the patients that we mutually serve. I'm here today to express our support for the Rocky Hill Imaging Center Certificate of Need Application for a CT scanner and MRI to be located in the new Trinity Health Medical Hub in Rocky Hill. Prime Healthcare relies heavily on our colleagues at Radiology Associates of Hartford to provide timely, high-quality imaging within our network. Our providers depend on the coordination of care with the radiology providers reading patient visits prior to interpretation, as well as access to comparison imaging performed throughout our network. The prime healthcare providers are well-versed in network integrity as it pertains to Medicare shared savings and other at-risk contracts. With two of our offices located in Weathersfield, the location of the Rocky Hill Imaging Center will provide enhanced access for our patients who live in Rocky Hill and the surrounding communities, thus assisting our providers in meeting their goals. I'm appreciative of your time today and the opportunity to speak before you in support of the Rocky Hill Imaging Center CON application. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Albano. Next on the list is Dr. James Redenberg. Is he with us at the moment?
I am, thank you, sir. Yes. So the last name is Vizen Victor, R E D E N B U R G H. First name is James. I am the neuro-oncologist here at St. Francis Hospital. So we take care of brain tumor patients, spinal tumor patients, spinal cord compression. It's critically important as we take care of these patients to have timely access to MRI, less so CT. But the MRIs are really critically important to keep these patients in the state of Connecticut and to be able to care for them locally. It's not just access to the MRIs, though. The more important part is my collaboration. I have to meet with the neurosurgeons, the neurologists, radiation therapists, and we work through the neuroradiologists at RAH in order to provide compassionate and timely care. I think we've really expanded our neuro-oncology program. And I think having an imaging facility in Rocky Hill will further enhance our ability to care for these very sick patients. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, doctor. Next on the list, I believe it's Dr. Richard Shumway. Is he here? I don't see him listed.
Yes.
There he is.
Coming now. All right, just had to turn on my microphone, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'm Dr. Richard Shumway. It's R I C H A R D, last name S H U M W A Y. I'm a senior attending physician in radiation oncology at St. Francis and I'm director of the Connecticut Cyrenic Center at St. Francis. And so I've been here for thirty, over thirty years. And in in my specialty, what's really evolved in the past ten, twenty years with treating cancer with radiation is that we use what's called image guidance. So pretty much all of our treatments are planned using it's sort of very precise MRIs and CT scans. And this is critical to have these scans available on a timely basis. And what I've noticed over the past several years, since MRIs and CTs have become more involved in all of medicine, that it's it's become more and more difficult to obtain a scan on a timely basis. So in fact, yesterday I had a patient with a cancer going into a spinal cord and we had to make phone call after phone call in order to to find a a scan that could be done on a timely basis. And so this evening Ra, they're going to be staying after hours to treat this, to to image this patient. So and what's also important is we need to have these scans available that are connected to the St. Francis system because we import these images and use them to plan our radiation treatments. And so many of our patients live in the Rocky Hill area. And up until now, it's it's been very difficult finding scans that are available on a timely basis in the area. So I I greatly support the the introduction of CT and MRI at the Rocky Hill Center. All right, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, doctor. Next on the list is Karen Letizio. Is she here?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
I can. Yes, I can't see your video, though. There you are.
Okay.
Yep.
Good afternoon, Attorney Sukka and officials of the Office of Health Strategy. My name is Karen Letizio, K A R E N, Letizio, L E T I Z I O. I am a resident of Weathersfield, Connecticut. Several members of my family have had services provided by Radiology Associates of Hartford, as well as being patients of various physicians across several specialties, all within Southern New England Healthcare, St. Francis Hospital in Medical Network. I am here today to speak to you about my husband, Vinny. In two thousand and one, Vinny had a CAT scan at St. Francis Hospital and Medical Center, interpreted by a Ra physician, indicating a strong likelihood of pancreatic cancer in the tail of his pancreas. The identification of mass allowed him to have it surgically removed. And I am blessed and happy to report that Vinny remains in good health today. In the eleven years since the scan, Vinny has seen many providers at the network, network. With very few exceptions, Vinny's imaging has been performed at St. Francis Hospital and Medical Center or the Ra Glastonbury Office. As we face the same time challenges that many working parent patients face, we were thrilled to learn of the medical hub opening so close to our home. This location will provide Vinny access in our community to the doctors that manage his care. As MR imaging is a regular component to monitor his health, knowing that we have access close to home makes coordinating appointments in our busy lives that much easier. It also ensures the same outstanding care by the providers we are so used to and honestly helped to save Vinny's life. We are eternally grateful to all of these outstanding caregivers. I ask for your support of the Rocky Hill Imaging Center Certificate of Need Application. I understand the value it brings to my family and what I believe it will bring to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Letizio. Next on the list, I believe the last one as well is Dr. David Silver.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you see me?
Yes.
Okay. Just just checking. My last name you spell just like the metal, S I L V E R. First name David. Good afternoon, Hearing Officer Kuzka and members of the Office of Health Strategy. My name is Dr. David Silver. I am the medical director for the Trinity Medical Group Medical Hub in Rocky Hill. I am pleased to share with you today my reasons for supporting the CON application for the CT scan and MRI scan are proposed to be located within the medical hub. I am a primary care physician. I am board certified by the American Board of Internal Medicine. I've been in private practice and worked for other healthcare systems. The Rocky Hill Medical Hub presents an opportunity for patients to have immediate local access to high-quality, low-cost imaging. Since the opening in January two thousand and twenty-two, the physicians who practice at the medical hub have have found it incredibly beneficial to the management of patients to have immediate access to medical imaging within the building. The service has been extraordinary. The addition of of the CAT scan and MRI in this location will allow patients to obtain high-tech imaging and allow the results to be discussed with the patients within the same location, literally at the same visit. This creates an improved level of care to the patient in a convenient setting. As providers, we are challenged with ensuring we manage our patient population with the highest level of care in the lowest cost setting. This application has my support and it meets both these objectives. I strongly support the Rocky Hill Imaging Center CON application for a CT CAT scan and MRI at the medical hub location. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor. Ms. Greer, do we have anyone else who signed up?
No, we do not have anyone else signed up.
Okay. And is there anyone else present who would like to be heard? Okay. Ms. McLaughlin and Mr. Lazarus, do you have any questions for the applicant based on what you heard from the public today?
No, I don't. Thank you.
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we are going to move on to, I guess we should discuss the late file first and the the timeline in terms of when that late file should be submitted. So I think the best place to start would be to have Steve, I think we decided you were going to list what we determined were the late files. So maybe let's start with number one and we'll just take them one at a time and and make sure everybody is on the same page.
Sure. So I have a total of eight late files. And I'll restart reading through each one. The first one is copies of the survey or supporting material regarding what St. Francis Hospital Medical Center customers have requested related to the location of services. Do the applicants concur on that one?
Um, so we, what we did is we underlined that sentence on page thirteen about the statement about the challenges of accessibility at St. Francis Hospital and how that translates into older patients in particular wanting to access, you know, better parking lots and easier, more comfortable care. So we underlined that one sentence and we're going to go and get survey data from the hospital where people make basically statements about the accessibility.
Okay. That's fine. And I've added the word accessibility in mind just so we can make sure that we are on the same page. So that's good. And so number two is supporting data used throughout the application for Truvian Market Expert and Advisory Board. Does that make sense, number two?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Number three is the you're the working, a provide a working URL for the current Cigna guidelines.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Number four, an updated exhibit to include cost comparison of CPT, of CPT codes and cost-related data for the CT and MRI.
Yeah, and on that one, the way that the All Pairs Claims Database was submitted, blinded the 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 exact CPT codes to, I assume, protect the market competitiveness of the exact pricing information. So we we can give you the CPT load level data, but we'd like to do the same thing where we email that to you and then upload to the portal something that looks more like the the blinded that you sent us as a public exhibit related to the other providers.
Hearing officer, your opinion?
I I don't have any issues with that. If that'll provide you with the same amount of information.
Yeah, we should, we should be okay with that.
Okay.
So yeah, you can email us a copy of the or the list of the CPT codes.
Okay.
And then number five, final executed copy of the agreed agreement between St. Francis Hospital Medical Center and Ra for the Rocky Hill Imaging Center Medical Hub. And in this case, I think we had, we're asking for both the redacted and unredacted form. And it may be best if you just email us both instead of uploading one. This way we can, I can have it actually reviewed by the hearing officer. Once it's, we agreed that a redacted copy is, then we will upload it. So we, I will make that clear. I will also provide you a copy of this list after, later afterwards, I'll email it to you. Attorney Rose, so you have it to work off as well.
I was on that point. I was just going to suggest that we do it as a letter.
Okay.
Just confirming everybody's understanding as to what the late files are going to be.
Sure. We'll get that out to you within next day or so. Number six, provide in a table list of towns contiguous to the applicant's proposed primary service area, include all the existing MRIs and CTs located in those towns. Additionally, provide an explanation as to why the applicants feel that these existing providers would not have an impact on their projected volumes.
So on that point, I want to avoid falling into the trap of, you know, us just saying the same thing that we've said over and over if you're dissatisfied with the answer. So we're happy to give you the towns and and the inventory of those scanners. And we will, we will do, undergo an analysis to say why that isn't going to impact the need that we've demonstrated. So I think we're going to do that. But I do want to just also add to our response without you guys feeling like we're saying the same thing over is that, you know, our our firm belief is that the only imaging providers that are part of SONE are Ra and St. Francis Hospital and that there is a strong value of the patient population, the SONE patient population that we're serving to be, you know, imaged within the network. So we just want to say it again as we're as we're doing this because that really is, I think, the the first level of why other providers aren't going to be able to provide the same level of service and aren't even part of our target population. So I just wanted to telegraph that and and get get your comments and see if you're okay with that.
Yes, you can put that in the explanation portion.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so number seven, for the proposed MRI and CT, provide the actual quantitative calculations that are utilized to achieve the projected volumes for fiscal years twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. I'm not sure if it's fiscal years, calendar years, maybe calendar years. I apologize for that. Based on the imaging advisory board recommendations, data provided that that any data that's applicable. And make sure it's separated by the MRI and the CT.
Okay, on this point, we certainly, we're going to get you that data. We also want to just note, and we'll know in the in the explanation, that while before the application was filed, there were observations and and a lot of things that were being accessed that I think were theoretical. Ra's actual growth numbers in recent years, which is shown in that supplemental table and where they are in terms of capacity, certainly is going to feed the volume and demonstrates that there's going to be initial volumes right out of the gate and perhaps even similar growth in Rocky Hill. So I just want to make sure it's appropriate if we also just make that note along with giving you the support for their original quantitative, you know, data used for the projections.
I I think adding explanation is fine.
Thank you.
And lastly, number eight, that's on my list is Ra's data. And lastly, number eight, that's on my list is RA's data to support the applicant's statement regarding experiencing significant growth in screening of lung cancer.
Yep, absolutely.
And that's all I have.
Um, Attorney Rose, do you have any others on your list?
No, no, we, I think that's, that almost exactly tracks what we had discussed. And so I'm, I'm glad to see that we have a mutual understanding. In terms of timing, we have more vacations coming up. It's always difficult in the summer. Um, do you think that we could, uh, submit this by July twenty-nine?
Um, I don't, I don't see why not. Um, we have a number of hearings coming up as well, so that should be fine.
Yeah, and I will say July twenty-nine or sooner because, you know, we are eager to get, um, approval, assuming approval is forthcoming. And, and be able to operationalize the scanners. So we're not looking to delay this on our end, but we do want to be respectful of, of people's, uh, vacation schedules. So, um, we will try to get it to you in advance of July twenty-nine, but I think we can commit to do it by then.
Okay, that works. Thank you. Um, so again, I'll, I'll have either, uh, Ms. McLaughlin or Mr. Lazarus memorialize this in a letter. That will be uploaded to the portal just so that everybody has it, so that's publicly available. Um, with that, uh. Attorney Rose, did you have any other questions or concerns before we go into closing argument or closing statement?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay. Um. Mr. Lazarus, Ms. McLaughlin, do you have any other questions or concerns?
We're all set.
Okay. So with that, uh, Mr. Rose, if you'd like to make a closing statement, feel free to do so.
Thank you. So I just want to thank you guys again for your time and attention to this matter. I know that every CLN application includes a volume of information and I can see that, you know, Yadira really did. Take the time to sort of dig in and question. We appreciate that, um, she's asking us for things to validate what we've given. To the agency and the statements that we've made and I, I'm pleased with. The lists that we have because I'm confident that we're going to be able to get you that information. And, and all I'd say from there is I want to reiterate my remarks in the beginning that I think that the, the clear public need is there. The information to support positive findings with respect to all the statutory criteria is there. And, um, I, I'd say that the sooner we can get approval, assuming it's forthcoming would be great. Because the medical hub is operational and imaging is being provided. And as you can see from the public comments, you know, there's, there's folks that are very excited to see it implemented. Thank you. Did you guys?
Thank you.
Those are my words.
Uh, nothing additional to add other than I, I'd like to thank the OHS team for your time. Your very thoughtful questions and your attention and certainly the public comments. I thank you. Um, to the clinicians, I thank you for taking time out of your busy day. I know it's not easy. All the other folks who spoke, um, patients, advocates, families, thank you. It means a lot to me to hear the feedback. I will certainly take it back to our team and I appreciate everybody for, um, taking the time. This is a very important venture. It can have significant effects as we've heard on lives in the community and I appreciate the time and attention.
Thank you, doctor. And, uh, Ms. Smith, did you want to make any additional comments?
Uh, again, just extend my thanks to all of you for, um, all of the detailed conversation that we had this morning. Um, I look forward to completing my to-do list to you, uh, by the end of July and I look forward to, uh, hopefully a positive outcome for everyone. We're looking forward to get going in Rocky Hill.
Thank you. Um, so on behalf of OHS, I just wanted to thank everybody who was in attendance today, including the witnesses. And, uh, those who submitted public comment. Uh, and Attorney Rose and your colleague who may or may not be off camera still at this point. So this hearing is hereby adjourned, uh, but the record will remain open until closed by OHS. So thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. Take care, everyone.
Thank you all.